Mr. Farmer, how are we gonna go about in reference to that? Don't we, or shouldn't we figure out what we want? And if we don't want anything, then the motion is moot.
Well, I think we should, I think we should vote on this motion. And if we're gonna move in that direction, then our next discussion here will be how we're gonna move ahead with doing that. First of all, we've got to establish, are we gonna hire a director?
Maybe we could reconsider the motion and say not, consider hiring a director. Either hire a director or don't hire a director at this point in time. Would that be a friendly amendment? Steve?
I'll go on with that. Hire a director?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see what the difference is.
Okay. Can we, Mr. Blair, you change your motion to?
The motion, previous motion will change from considering hiring a director to, uh, motion would be to allow or to hire a new director.
Motion on?
To hire a new director, do not hire a new director.
You got that Stacy?
Friendly amendment.
Rather than consider hiring.
To hire a new director rather than consider.
So in other words, if we decide not to go ahead and hire someone.
At this time?
It'll be a no vote. If we want, if we want to hire somebody and go through the process, then it'll be a yes vote.
Okay. Let's clear this up, please. Mr. Blair, would you retract your motion, your original motion and your amendment and retract the second motion and let's start over?
Sure.
So it's not convoluted. Would you?
Okay, I'll retract mine.
Okay. Now, motion on the floor, Mr. Blair? Could you state your motion again?
Motion to hire a new director.
Mr. Blair moved to hire a new director. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second. Is there any further discussion? Being none, call for the question. Mr. Rudd?
I vote no.
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Uh, no.
Mr. Blair went in the wrong way.
We're going to call her a cop wife now.
Does it matter? It does matter?
Yes.
It does?
It does. He was supposed to go first. Doesn't make any difference. Don't make no effort.
Okay. Anyways, Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Our next move should be, we need, I think I should set up a hiring committee to look at the, uh, our, enabling legislation spells out what the director duties are. So I think everybody should come up to speed on that. And then the committee should meet and decide what they think the hours should be, what they think the rate of pay should be, and start developing a, uh, a posting for the paper of generalized duties. I believe, Ms. Ken, do we have a, uh, did we have a, uh, something in our pack a couple months ago?
It's attached.
Is it? Okay. So that would be some, something that you could start off on. But I?
I, I like Mike's idea bringing up, that he brought up earlier about getting somebody in here part-time, volunteering just to see what the duties involved.
Okay, then it's.
If somebody's willing to do that, I don't know.
Is there, is there a motion on the floor to move that direction?
I'll second that.
Well, I'm asking for a motion, please.
To make a motion that we hire or get a volunteer to sit into the executive director's position until one is hired and we find out exactly what their duties are.
Any board member.
Any board member that wants to do it. From North Cooch.
Okay, motion on the floor, Mr. Blair to?
To allow interim director?
Volunteer. Volunteer the interim director to, to sit in the director's position till we figure out what the duties are actually.
From North Cooch.
From North Cooch. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
What is meant by North Cooch?
Someone from, uh, eat North Cooch. A board member from North Cooch.
Okay, so it's one of us?
Yeah. Kind of narrows the field.
Good discussion.
At one, at one point, I thought, I thought, uh, the reigning, uh, member was, was interested in something similar, but.
Oh, no. No, no. No, I, you know, I spend enough, I spend enough time in this boardroom. It is.
Any further discussion? Call for the question. It will go this way. Mr. Farmer?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Do we have any volunteers?
Say something.
Yes, sir.
I really don't think they should be a volunteer. I think there should be some form of payment.
I think we're looking for a volunteer just to move into the position and we can figure out.
That's my understanding.
I will do it for 90 days. I do not want to do it any longer than that. And I'll do it for up to two hours a day. And I, I wouldn't want my hour set specifically because I volunteer in school three days a week from 9:15 to 10:45. I don't want to interrupt that, that. So being said that, um, I put my name forward for that.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we set the conditions and hours and stuff like that, I think it could be a flexible, very flexible thing. Two days a week, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I'm just stating my.
The temporary person could set their hours as required, you know.
Okay. Mr. Blair?
I think eventually we're gonna wanna coordinate with the secretary about when this part-time position would work during the day so that you could cover for like lunch period so the office would not be locked up. I don't know.
She doesn't lock the office for much.
No.
She's open, yeah, she takes the house lunch and stuff, so.
Well, even then, that might be, you know, if it's part-time, she might have a, or even the chief of plan operator might have a particular time that they would like to have this person sitting, sitting in here where they can discuss things.
Yeah, we can work that out. Definitely, I, if I was moved in that position, I would wanna talk to the staff every time I come in. I have been doing that also already, so I'm coming to comment.
So you mean 90 days term would start today?
May 1st would be my end date. Delayed maybe all day.
Yeah, April, and April is 98.
What, are we gonna call this position interim executive director?
If you want, that'd be fine with me. Temporary director?
Voluntary. Voluntary.
Voluntary. Well.
Just to get an idea of what the duties involve.
That's a very good offer.
So before we even advertise or whatever we're gonna do, I think we should have Jim in there for at least 30 days so he can help us with the job description. So I'd like to post, postpone advertising for an executive director for at least 30 days.
I'll second that motion.
No, that'll be.
No, I mean, I think that's the right thing to do. I mean, 'cause I don't understand all the duties of the executive director. Maybe you guys do. I, I don't understand exactly what he does.
Okay. Then, yeah, that's something outside of the discussion, so. The motion on the floor was to hire an interim director, right?
Robert's second.
Have someone volunteer to move into the position.
Yeah.
Not motion's carried.
I will accept that on approval of the, of the vote of the board. Any further discussion?
Can we have the motion? Can you restate the motion?
Motion by Ed, second by Thompson, to have someone volunteer to move into the position a couple hours a week temporarily.
Must be a North Cooch board member.
It's not naming anybody then?
No.
A North Cooch.
Is that motion? Okay, so let's, let's call for the question and then we'll.
I thought we said that motion was carried.
That motion was carried?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. So then, I put my name out there, is that acceptable? Is there, could I have, if you want, the board wants to move in that direction, then I would entertain a motion accepting me doing that.
I'll saw move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion?
Can you just say chairman?
Yes.
I think we should say chairman or just to comply with what it says in the, in the legislation. Say Chairman Jim Robb.
Yeah.
Motion by Billy, second by Larson, to have Chairman Robb serve a 90-day interim position. How's that?
Voluntary. Voluntary 90-day interim position.
Up to 90 days.
Up to 90 days.
Voluntary up to 90-day interim position.
We can renew that.
No, we're not renewing it. Okay. Should we call for the question? Farmer?
Yes.
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 I vote yes.
Will there be a rate of pay for this or is it gonna be free?
That's why we put voluntary.
Voluntary, so I'm gonna be doing this for?
No. Voluntary, if somebody to volunteer, now you gotta discuss the rate of pay.
For the future.
Is that?
For the future. Is that what you're saying?
Was personally a volunteer to accept the temporary position.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Now Jim has accepted the motion, now we wanna discuss the rate of pay.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes. Thank you.
My understanding, the motion was for a volunteer for the, and we're.
A volunteer to come forward to take the position.
To accept the job first.
I don't expect somebody to do it for nothing.
Not me.
Oh, you guys need to discuss that amongst.
No, I mean.
Why don't you, I'm gonna open this up just for a general discussion. I'll recognize people and you guys can decide that without me bringing forward anything. So, Mr.
I, I think there should be some compensation for it. I don't believe you should do it for absolutely no pay and if he wants, and I'm sure he'd be more than fair about it, and, uh, we can hire him as a.
We're just talking about a rate of pay.
A rate of pay, just like with nothing other than just $30 an hour.
We haven't even gotten to how many hours a week he will, he will be sitting here. I heard, I did hear two hours a day, is that five days a week or?
Yes, that's what I'm gonna be willing to work.
No, and plus it would, it's gonna be flexible too.
Yes.
Maybe not two hours one day, maybe four hours the next day or, I mean.
Possibly, but you know what?
We should limit the number of hours per week because otherwise we give.
I would limit at 10 because I'm in here more than that.
10 hours a week.
Yeah. Just to, just to get up to speed handling the chair business and stuff, and now I'm gonna be looking at the director stuff. 10 hours is more than, is not gonna be adequate enough, but I'm willing to do that. Now, if I stay any longer and stuff like that is, you know, pretty long. Yeah. So.
Yeah, well, I hate to throw monkey wrench into it, but is this a salary or an hourly position? That's if we get it.
Hourly, I didn't, I, no benefits, nothing, I don't want any of that.
So does that make you a contract worker and I give you a $10.99 at the end of your 30 days, 60 days?
That would be up to Mary to figure all of that out. Mr. Blair?
Well, that is, I think is where we're gonna have to have legal advice, whether or not a board member can be employed by the district.
I think the board member can be the director in our enabling legislation. But we can get an opinion if that's the way the board wants it. But let's, let's clear this up so that if the legal opinion, if you wanna move in that direction with a legal opinion and it comes back favorably, it's a done deal. If not, then we can come back and readdress it. How does that sound? 'Cause we don't wanna keep pushing this out. We wanna get a director on board as fast as we can. We've got other stuff to do. Right?
But I think what we're looking at for this temporary director is just for the job descriptions on the left and right.
Yeah, to make, yeah, to.
To figure out with the job description of what type of permanent administrator's gonna be.
Plus to handle director responsibilities on a day-to-day basis too. That's part of the job.
So right now, we're looking at temporary person. I don't see where there's any legal implications on the scene that any one of us couldn't do it. I don't see any reason to check with an attorney or anything to see if it's possible. We know we need an interim director, so otherwise you're gonna wind up on and, uh, you're gonna drag an out, to announce or advertise for an interim director. You have to advertise otherwise, and you're gonna keep dragging us out where we guys go ahead and do it and worry about the ramifications.
I think we, right. I think we should do it today, right now. But I, you know, I have a little, uh, problem with $30 an hour. Say as a new person in the position, maybe $20 an hour after 30 days, then, uh.
No.
No? Or second.
As a, with no benefits, I believe that $30 an hour is a fair amount. I really do, with no benefits.
Or we could just do a flat weekly salary.
Well.
I'd like to just hold it at hourly.
I would too.
Do you have an idea as to what you would like?
My range is 25 to 30. We don't wanna make this close. We want someone in here to move ahead, you know? So if, if, I'll come down to 25 if you guys wanna pinch pennies here. But I'm willing to do it. Is anybody else willing to do it?
I make a motion, maybe $30 an hour, 10 hours a week.
Second that motion.
Who seconded?
David.
Discussion.
Motion is Jim Robb as a temporary director for 90 days at $30 an hour.
Up to 10 hours.
Up to 10 hours.
No, no way in 10. Mr. Blair?
I would like a friendly amendment that up to 30 hours, or no more than 30 hours a week and no benefits.
10 hours.
10 hours.
Oh, 10 hours, which, no benefits.
No benefits.
No benefits. That's what I would like to make the amendment. Is that okay?
Yeah.
David?
Here.
No amm, no benefits.
Okay, there's a second, there's amendment.
You have amended it, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have to amend this one. Mr. Blair amended it up to.
10 hours a week.
10 hours a week, which is already part of the motion, but no benefits. Mr. Farmer seconded that. Is there discussion on the amendment?
It's up to 90 days. It doesn't say 90. It says up to 90 days, not 90 days, right? So I mean, gives you a right if you decide after 60 days or something, you have a way out.
The last motion was up to 90 days. Now this motion is just basis on 10 hours a week, $30 an hour.
Okay, so we're gonna call for the question on the amendment. The amendment is, Mr. Blair's to up to 10 hours a week and no benefits. Call for the question. Farmer?
Yes.
Blair?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. Now we're gonna move on the amendment, call for the question on, on the original motion, I'm sorry, to, uh, pay the interim director $30 an hour, 10 hour, up to 10 hours per week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Call for the question? Yes, Farmer?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Yes.
Abstaining, I'll abstain. I wasn't paying attention at first. I didn't hear the first.
We're voting on the original motion by Mr. Thompson to, uh, pay the interim director $30 an hour up to $10 per week.
Okay, and we amended?
We already voted on the amendment.
Okay.
For no be, for no benefits. Now we're voting on the original motion.
Okay, no.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Abstain. Motion passes. Okay, is there, is there any other discussion about the job? Any ideas? Was sit in the position and discuss it with Stacy and look through the records and see and look at the enabling legislation and come up with a list of duties and what, what he's been doing and what he should be doing and stuff like that, and then present it to a committee, a hiring committee. And I think the hiring committee should bring forward that kind of a document.
You're talking about a human resource committee or?
A special appoint committee, yes.
Okay. There is no committee.
Established for that.
There was a committee appointed some years ago. But we're talking a new committee that?
Just for the hiring.
Okay.
I'd like to appoint that committee today.
That would be like a personnel committee.
Yes, hiring committee for the director. Are there any volunteers for the, for being on that hiring committee? Mr. Billy, would you be on it?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Any others? Mr. Larson? Any others? Mr. Farmer? Remember, Mr. Ken?
No, but I, I just.
They just have to stop there. I mean, if you get more than four, it's a quorum, you're not gonna have to publish these notices in the paper, I don't know what your intent is.
You know, uh, we've had the HR committee met as a committee of the whole because these are very important decisions a lot of the time and it's good to have the whole board give input.
But it's gonna be brought back to the whole board. You're just looking at a committee to keep the numbers down, to be able to discuss it. It will be brought back to the board then.
Yes. I still like committee of the whole idea.
Well, no, committee of the whole has to be appointed by, has to be brought, brought from the chair and voted on to go into a committee of the whole. When you go into the committee of the whole, I believe you could act on district business at that time. And we don't wanna do that. We want it to be a, a discussion within a committee and bring forward the recommendation, the job description and stuff, and then we can bring that to the board and then discuss it. And if we don't like that, then we can send it back to the committee for further review. But, you know, if we're getting, you know.
Okay.
All of our members trying to do this, I think it's, it's gonna take more time. So this is the way I'd like to move on this.
You have four?
Yeah.
Yourself, Dave, Robert, and Bill.
Well, we have, we have four.
Don too.
Yeah. Mr. Billy, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Larson, Mr. Far, Mr. Farmer.
So if you, oh, so if there's just four, I don't believe you have to post it.
Okay.
It's not a quorum.
Right. So that'll be the hiring committee for the new director. Uh, there's one other thing before I close the meeting, and that is, we have to start thinking about if our administrative secretary takes vacation for any extended periods of time, which she's eligible to do, how are we gonna fill her position? We have no one to step into that position to do.
Thought we had Carol.
Hargie.
Well, evidently she is getting less and less, uh, likely to wanna be doing that.
She said she'll come in, but she said she doesn't like preparing for board meetings and things like that. I think she's starting to enjoy her retirement. She's, will never leave us hanging, but.
So we have to start thinking about how we're gonna, how we're gonna cover that area, which it could happen. She could get sick, Carol's not available, whatever, and that's a, a pretty big responsibility to hold.
But the thing is, somebody's gonna have to be trained. It's gonna take a long training period.
That's what I'm asking everybody to just think about what, how, you know, start thinking about it.
Your first job as a temporary director.
Jim, I think maybe that should be part of the job description for the new executive director when we hire one.
Well, let's bring that up to committee.
Okay. Something to think of.
Are you going on vacation anywhere?
But my husband probably needs knee surgery.
Okay, let's bring this back to the table. Okay. We stand adjourned.
Okay, we're meeting on the 16th?
Uh, general, regular meeting?
Yeah. I got it marked 16th in my book, so. Um, Don?
16th is the next board meeting.
16, 8:00 AM.
My name's, uh, Mike Atlantic. I'm a newer resident of the National Falls. And, uh, I'm interested in city and county government, and I wanna become an active member of my community. Found out about this meeting, that's why I'm here today. I've got a little bit of a background in wastewater treatment and, uh, just like to say hello. And I've, uh, worked all over the country in different jobs that I've had and all over the world. And I'd just like to say that this National Falls is my very favorite place in the whole world. My family, mom and dad, brothers and sisters, have been coming up this way since 1971. And, uh, I just like to say hello and, and, uh, try to find out about not only this open meeting, but open meetings with the city council and whatever's available so I can become an active member of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Like I said, my child got a phone yesterday, I encourage you to, to apply for the job when the motion comes.
Sure, that'd be fine.
All right, we stand adjourned.
So, uh, one question now, I talked to you briefly about agendas, items that a board member may want, how do you wanna handle this? Talk to you, uh, about it, to get it on the agenda?
Yeah, why don't you, let's start doing that because I've been giving them to Stacy and she's, we, sometimes we get quite lengthy agenda stuff, so we might have to start trying to figure out which ones we wanna put on or not, 'cause we don't want these meetings to.
Or assign to a committee? Or assign an agenda item to a committee or whatever?
Quite possibly, yeah. Why don't you just give all your agenda items to Stacy and I'll just review, you know? And I'll call you or something, or maybe we do, maybe she's the one to generate them. Just keep giving it to her. You know, was that, was that?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I just didn't know how you wanted to.
I think that's the way we did it in the past, wasn't it? Kind of, is that the way you handled it?
And, uh, I think that, uh.
Hi.
As far as calling meetings, special meeting, I think it says that any two members. But I don't know how that's done. Both members called. I don't know how that's done. Both members called Stacy or both members called?
That's what I call that special meeting. That's what I had. I had Mr. Blair call and I called to tell Stacy that she posted it.
So our HR committee, we have an HR committee. Steve, myself, John, who was as chairman, Mr. Dalton was there and now he's pulled out of here, so. I don't know what you wanna do with the HR.
Yeah, we'll take that up.
16th, everybody, no Facebooks or no iPad attendees, everybody's gonna be, nobody getting sore down?
Morning.
Well, only Don here. Wait, 16th.
Minnesota power check.
Or, wait, meeting after.
And I think Steve Blair has to sign it, 'cause right now things are in the process of changing.
Okay, so we have to, we have to re, uh we had to repost the February meeting to the 16th.
It is posted to 16th.
It is. Yeah, no, but I mean, instead of the 15th, so you gotta post it. Every, no, no, I know, you will post it, but it going back to the Tuesday meeting thing. If we have a regular meeting on, on the second or the third Tuesday, then it doesn't have to be posted every time and all this.
It's always, I post the meetings always, 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 always. It doesn't matter on the day. You cast a resolution out of how many years ago that you could change the date.
Right, right, but, but Tuesday's a better day, is all I'm saying. Because you change Mondays, uh, a vacation or a holiday a lot of times. Every day.
I still have to change it 'cause I have back, backboard meetings, so.
What do you guys, uh, uh, ever thought about Tuesday meeting, sir?
Not since I've been here. We haven't talked about it then on the.
I mean, then you're changing your meeting all the time. I'm not-
We haven't because of the holiday.
The holiday.
But we haven't talked about it. So we just make sure, we do the same thing.
Well, right here it is Tuesday. We're kind of progressive though.